On the adoption of the state building codes. Again, this is something we really have little say in whatsoever. It's more of a boilerplate type issue that we're just passing along. Are there any comments or concerns about the? Building code update, which would be ordinance three sixteen? Hearing none. Do I need to have a motion to close the public hearing, Jody, or do I close the public hearing?
You close it.
Okay. Hearing no comments or additional concerns, I will close the public hearing on ordinance three sixteen for adoption of the building code updates. I would. Skip the public hearing. We've closed it. We will move on and come back to vote on it here under old business. Okay? So also in front of you, you should have the minutes from our last meeting on six April.
I move approval of the minutes.
I have a motion from Councilman D to approve.
Second.
A second from Councilman Major. Any comments, concerns, or corrections? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as presented. Steve Howard is leaving on Thursday, you guys. And so he will miss the first meeting in May, possibly the second, depends upon how successful they are on his trip. Okay? Anybody else who's going to be gone that might miss a meeting? So we might have to do some rescheduling? Nope. Okay. Under our old business, we um have to vote on the second reading of ordinance three sixteen, our building code update.
I move approval of ordinance number three one six.
I have a request, a motion from Councilman D to approve.
Second.
A second from Councilman Merja?
Oh, Major.
Major. I couldn't tell. Stuart's voice would have had food in it. Any additional comments or concerns, questions? Mel, you got any questions? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, building or ordinance three sixteen will stand as approved and passed. Under new business, we will not have Steve Rose tonight because of the situation that took place in town today. So we're gonna have to.
Do we need a motion to postpone it to the next agenda?
No, we can just put it on the next agenda. If you table it, then you gotta take it off.
Right.
Okay. Um, so we'll just push that back and we'll reach out to Fire Chief and DES Coordinator Rose and get that taken care of at our next one. Okay? Claims. Very, there are any questions? What's that?
I move approval of the claims.
I have a motion from Councilman D.
Second.
Second from Councilman Merja.
Can I say something before?
Have at it, Jody.
Are you gonna say it? Or you said have at it?
You just muted yourself, Jody.
Unmute yourself, Jody.
I was unmuted. Okay, I want to draw your attention just to the the one claim for the thirty eight hundred dollars, I think it is to DIS. Just so you guys are aware, we've had a lot of server issues lately and we are going to have to look about six months early. We're gonna have to get a new server. You know, the money's there. It's not actually in our budget, but we can't wait. We're every once in a while, it just restarts itself. Well, that is becoming a really big issue when it restarts itself like once every forty minutes. So we're limping it along. So just so you know, that I just wanted you guys to be aware of that was what was going on. And that's just the first payment. That's not all of it. So we're gonna get a better firewall as well. They want to upgrade that. So just so you know.
A very, very good addition to that system.
Yeah.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
I wasn't gonna say anything because I want to see if someone, one of the council members would ask. So.
I know, but you know.
I know. Any other questions or concerns, you guys, on the claims?
Call the question.
Uh, those in favor paying the bills?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will get them paid. Under our reports tonight, I'm not gonna read through them. They are all attached. Mel, what would be? Is it better for us to read them or what? What would your preferences be for us when we do these things?
I think that if the, if any of the reports contain something that's unusual or especially significant, I think that making a verbal record during the council meeting of that part of the report is important to do. But I also think it's important to just let people know, people who might be watching, that those reports are available at the city office. And they can swing by and get them, or I don't know if you post those to the website, available online via the website. But I don't think you have to spend time during the meeting going through those written reports unless again, there's a significant issue that you want to bring the rest of the council and the public's attention to. That's my two cents, and that's all it is. Others can feel differently.
I want to thank the people that turned in their reports because it did get us caught up to speed. Everybody's current these days. Um, Jen's got some issues with full court giving her accurate information, so she was gonna work with the court and get us updated for next month as well.
Okay.
I am going to ask for a little leeway here, and I see that Chad White is on board with us. And I'm gonna let Chad skip ahead to public comment because he's not on the agenda. And Chad can have the floor for some time, and I again ask for some leeway on the five minutes. Chad is our new grizzly bear specialist with Fish Wildlife and Parks. Chad was in to see Jody and I and Tom at City Hall last week. And a breath of fresh air. I cannot express to you guys how encouraged I was to chat with him. So Chad, unmute yourself and the floor is yours.
Quick, uh, before he gets on, this could probably fall under reports as far as leeway from public comment. Because it is a report about something that deals with safety and workings of the city.
Yeah, I talked to the city attorney and he said, do it this way.
Okay, it sounds good.
Well, thanks for having me on. Yeah, I appreciate the invite. So recently, we've had a collared young female bear that live in on the outskirts of town along the river. And it spurred some interest in my mind to start a conversation, more of a grassroots level conversation with the city of Shoto as a whole to start planning for more bears being around more often into the future. And what can we do to get ahead of that, of that potential? As it stands, we've kind of been on a reactive level for a long time, and I think it'd be good to have a legitimate conversation about trying to be more proactive and making that a community run initiative. We can step in as, you know, the city and I can step in some representing the state. But I think it would be best if, if members of the community stepped into that role and, and more of a neighbors helping neighbors sort of effort. And yeah, so I appreciate you guys inviting me on. I just wanted to start that conversation and see where it goes.
Chad, we're ready for signs to help us signs. Uh, the caveat is that if we want to put signs that welcome to Shoto, you know, the city limit signs on either end on the roads coming in, we have to deal with Montana Department of Transportation. Okay, because they control the right of way and those signs have to be approved by them. The good news is that Director of the Department of Transportation and the Great Falls staff are gonna be here on May thirteenth for a meeting with us. So if we had some idea of what we wanted to do for a sign, I would present it to them and say, give us a thumbs up or the thumbs down.
Yeah, that sounds good. I need to talk with them about signs for roadwork coming up in the near future as well. So yeah, we can start with signs. I have some bear resistant trash cans that we can work with our, our trash removal folks and see if those trash cans would work with our trucks. That way we'd have an idea of what we can use in the future for employing some bear resistant trash cans on the outskirts of town. If we wanted to start some zoning planning, we could make priority areas along the creeks and waterways along the edges of town, namely along the river, brushed in alleys. And, uh, and just really start off with the easy to tackle issues, which are trash, outdoor pet feed, bird feed, and, uh, and then all the fruit trees in town. So. I think it'd be good if we could sort of get the ball rolling and, and have members of the community step up and, and, you know, help out with this. Because I think it, I think it ultimately would fail if I were trying to drive it all.
And this is a proactive approach, you guys. We're not being mandated or told or anything like that. This is us as a community getting ahead of the curve and saying, we understand this. We have an issue and we want to stay ahead of it. Correct, Chad?
That's right. Yeah. I started to reach out to some of the city folks in West Glacier. I thought maybe it'd be good if we had a Montana city that we could model after and sort of pick their brains, see what they've done and, and how it's worked for them in the many years they've done it. West Glacier would be a good place to start, but it sounds like they have some new folks in house, so we might have to do a little dig in to get some information from them. But there's lots of communities across the country and across the nation that, that we can look at for examples of what works well, what doesn't work well. And just try something out. But I think this is a good opportunity for Shoto to be in the spotlight for other communities on the front as they start to see more bears moving eastward and more bears in numbers. If that plays out, I think it'd be good for Shoto to, to be the community that everyone looks to for examples of what works well.
Jody, did you talk to the garbage guys about Thursday?
No, I have not yet. It's been, it's, we're, we're on, you're, we're on Mondays.
I know, and Chad, your issues of being on call twenty four seven as well, but.
I will do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. And like, like we've identified before, we don't have a huge problem right now. We're just trying to get the ball rolling in the right direction and see where it goes.
Chad, a question for you. I've had a couple of folks ask me how they get on the bear list, the bear notification list. Sounds like there was a bear week or so, maybe two weeks ago now, that was on the south side of town. Maybe not in my direct area, but my wife walks to work. And so just, A, how do we make sure that folks get notified when they need to be notified? And B, how do they get on if they're not already on?
Yeah. So I, I run that program right now. I have a, a system that I use. So as it stands right now, direct all of those inquiries directly to me and I'll get you my contact information if you want, and I can drop back.
City Hall, Steve.
But um, I have been talking with the mayor about, about using Shoto's alert system. It would be cheaper for me. We'd reach more people. And it would be faster. I did send that message out the evening before at about nine thirty and it didn't hit the air until eight o'clock the next morning. So that's not quite fast enough for me. I don't know how you guys feel, but if I'm sending out an alert, so public information that I want folks to know about right away, I don't want it going out the next morning. So there's gotta be a better way.
Our alert system today, Jody, was that done through Paul? Was that instigated through Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah, today worked for the fire.
Yeah, I have talked to Paul, Chad, and he was gonna, he needed to check with DES as well. And then I was, and when he got that done, he was gonna let me know. And then he was gonna get ahold of you. That emergency alert. I, I don't know. He won't, isn't actually working in the office and starting next week. So I'm not sure it, what exactly if he's gotten ahold of Deb yet or not, but I know that he was going to.
Great. That sounds nice.
Progress is slow, but it is progress.
Yeah, I, I talked with our other bear manager in Conrad and asked him about this, and he said he started to use the, the public school alert system in Conrad. So it's being used in other places, so we might as well try it here.
I think Melody had a question a minute ago. I just want to make sure that you're seeing Mel in case you did.
I think Chad addressed it. I was, my, of course, my first question was garbage cans. How many reports of bears getting into garbage cans have we had? And how costly is the transition to bear proof garbage cans?
That's, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. So I'll just try to knock out some of those answers. I don't have a great pulse on what we've had for trash can conflicts before. I'm sure it's happened. It's probably not happened in high number with, you know, a bear walking down the alley, knocking over multiple cans, but it's probably isolated areas is what I would expect. However, I think there are a number of different trash cans on the market that could work well for us. The ones that I have that we can try to start with, I think are probably one of the better ones on the market. They're also one of the more expensive ones on the market. They are an automated trash can. So when, when the truck has the pinching mechanism to lift the can, grabbed onto it, it releases the, the lid internally. So the driver doesn't have to get in and out of the truck at every house. We don't necessarily need that here. We could still go with the cheaper, you know, clip models, and there's a number of those. And we can talk about that into the future, but I would say budget for somewhere between two fifty and three fifty per can, unless we can get a bulk order.
Joe, uh, Mel, we are due to order some garbage cans this summer too. So that's, again, we're ahead of the curve. And that's why we want them to try some of these with our truck and see what we can do.
Yeah. In other cities that have made this effort, they phase them in, in, in locations that are, you know, more priority areas and kind of zone it out. So everybody gets a neighborhood will get, you know, new cans this year and a different neighborhood will get them the next year. We could probably have a.
I need to talk. I think that really we're having a lot of trouble with our new cans anyway. So this, you know, actually the bear proof ones will probably last like our old cans did. You know, our cans that we've been ordering that we ordered two years ago, we're having a lot of trouble. They're breaking. So this isn't, uh, you know, we're gonna have to replace, if we're gonna have to continue to replace cans every two years, it won't take long to add up to what these cans are costing, unfortunately.
Councilman Merja. Your hat is in the air.
Yeah, Jody, what, what were we spending on those? Just the plastic ones?
I think these last ones were close to a hundred dollars. They were seventy five, but I think they're up to about a hundred dollars right now. But they're, and they're far less well made.
Yeah. Oh, the durability is poor.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I thought. So I mean, if they're lasting two, three years, if we get one of these bear containers in the last nine years, then it's a wash.
Right. Exactly. So, I mean, the one, the one I have at my house that we got fifteen years ago is still fine. But you know, the ones that we're, we're giving out that we've got two years ago, so aren't.
I've got, I've got a ten or twelve year old one and it's, I mean, it's low and dinged up, but it's fine.
Right, me too.
Okay, thank you.
If you guys want, if you're personally curious what cans we're talking about, the ones that I have that we'd be trying that I like a lot are called Kodiak Bear Resistant Can.
We checked them out on the web. Anything else for us, Chad?
You know, I, I think if we can develop some sort of a plan, if you guys want to do it in a zoning aspect, we should start laying out some lines on a map and figure out what neighborhoods to, to start with first and then develop what our messaging looks like and who's gonna deliver that messaging. I would say it, it's best to start small and easy, you know, don't feed your dog outside, feed them inside. Pick your fur when it's ripe in the fall and, and, you know, make your bird feeders more inaccessible. Don't hang them right in front of your window. Those sorts of things that are easy to easy for people to change and not feel like they're pressured into it.
Yeah. Okay, and I'll work with you and I know we will through City Hall. It's a message we gotta get out. We need to stay ahead of this and be proactive. The last thing I want to see happen is us become reactionary. It's a battle we can't win if we're reactionary. We can do this if we're proactive.
Yeah, yeah. And that particular bear that I brought up as an example, for what spurred this in my mind, she's, she doesn't have kids right now, but she will. And if she likes living near town and she has kids near town and she's already comfortable around people, then she's just training other bears. That's one that we know about because it's collared. There's probably other ones that have a similar motive. They just want to be around town because that's a good spot to live and we can't prevent that. We need to adapt to it. And so, yeah, this is the, the time to be proactive and to try to come up with the right solutions now.
The grizzly bears living around town are truly the only affordable housing around. If that's it, Chad, I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all. I appreciate the platform.
And I will get your contact info out to Jody, so Jody can get it out to all the council members.
I have it already.
I know you do. All right. Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, thank you.
Council members, who wants to, Rochambeau to start? All right, Councilman Merja, you're on it.
He was just throwing paper.
Yeah.
All right. I'm the senior member of the council. I'll go. No, I'm just kidding. A quick question, um, water use. Are we still needing to restrict it?
I would tell you at least through the night because they're gonna be pumping water all night long.
Okay.
And we were trying to get an idea of gallons pumped today and gallons put on that building today and it's astronomical.
Well, there won't be any water, there won't be any water in basements from Spring Creek for a while.
No, there will not.
So there's that much water. I mean, there was a lake out there, uh, at about three o'clock this afternoon.
I was told it was the first time they took water out of Spring Creek for a fire in Shoto since Caducea Lumber Fire.
Wow.
Mr. Mayor, can you elaborate on that a little bit just for folks at home who may not understand what you're talking about?
Go, go ahead, Chris.
Meaning, oh. Okay, so the fire call came in a little bit before noon. And shortly thereafter, noon, we lost power. And that meant that the power, we lost power to the Rickham well, which is our main well. The generator was out there running and we were, Mike indicated we were able to maintain as best we possibly could. And I cannot thank Brian from Northwestern Energy enough for figuring out how to swap lines over and trip breakers to get us power back out there. But I'd heard this evening, we dropped the, the city water tanks had dropped significantly from the, from the amount of water that was pumped. Knowing that was happening, they called for Augusta Sun River and Power to send us their water trucks. And they began setting up honey holes, portable water supply tanks there, one on Main Avenue in front of the building and another one to the south in those lots. And we were hauling water. Shoto sent one of their trucks down to Spring Creek and we helped them get set up on the bridge there. And we were pumping water out of Spring Creek into the tankers. And I have a picture of six tankers lined up on Main Street getting ready to go and deliver their water so that the fire had an adequate source of water at all times.
Thank you.
Have this been in another part of town, you guys? We'd have had an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Mel.
Did the, was the power failure because of the fire? Or was it separate from the fire at the Rickham well?
No one has told me yet. But I lost power. I mean, most everything on the north side of, of First Street there was out of power. We were out of power out at our office and it came back on after a while. City Hall on that side of town was not. So I wondered if it was, had to do with that or not. Brian was a little busy. I didn't want to pest him.
No. Well, and, and what we had been told at the bank is, you know, it was due to the fire and that was it. So whether it's the fire caused it or they shut it off because of the fire, it, it's kind of a moot point. Electricity's off and it's scrambled for a while.
Yeah. Northwestern Energy will be on site all night.
Yeah. Yep. Um, the next thing I have is, uh, the alert today. So it, it didn't go out to all, to everyone. I know Leanne and I didn't get it. There were a couple other, uh, bank employees who didn't get it. What, uh, what number, what calling tree do we use for that?
That is one that is used by Paul Wick and it goes to every phone number within a certain radius of Shoto, mobile or not. I got it at my office and I got it on my cell phone.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I got a mobile alert, not even like a text. I got the text message, the phone call, and then like a cell phone alert, like from, like my provider.
Yep. So AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, all those folks, it should have gone through. So it's non discriminatory. You don't have to sign up for it. It's if you're within that, that company's cell phone tower radius, you're going to get it whether you live here or not.
Well, and so that's, that's the interesting thing is, so others at the bank have Verizon like me. My son has Verizon. He's on my plan. He got the alert and I did. So I don't, I don't know if there's any way for us to look into that or not. But, um, I just, I wanted it out there that, you know, not everybody who was right there in the vicinity got it. I didn't know until my coworkers informed me that we were supposed to conserve water. So.
I will find a way to get ahold of Verizon and ask them, Stuart, that surprises me.
Yeah, well.
Unless you were in the vault.
I, I wasn't. I was standing in the teller line and somebody literally next, within four feet of me got it on her Verizon phone. So, um, yeah. Um, yeah, Leanne says that she didn't get it because she wasn't in Shoto at the time. She was in Harpoot. Uh, the other thing is, uh, several of the church leaders have gotten together, were, uh, were seeing what we can do for people. Uh, I think Kim was going to reach out to probably to you, Chris, about the Lutheran Church being a drop off point for anything people might need, but.
And I will let them know that.
Okay, good. So, um, other than that, I, I'm sure I had other stuff, but it's been kind of a hectic day. So done.
Yes, a hectic day is an understatement. As a matter of fact, my phone just went off with someone asking me where they could donate. So I'm sending them to Lutheran Church.
I haven't heard from Chuck yet, so I'll let you know when I do.
Okay, Councilman D, you look like you're ready to roll.
Strap in. I didn't say anything last time, but I've got some stuff this week. I wrote it down. Even so, I remembered it all. All right, Chamber of Commerce. Egg hunt went very well. Thank you to everyone who showed up and thank you for everyone who helped out and got it all ready. Uh, it sounds like the biggest problem this year was that it was actually warm for once, and so chocolate melted, which is maybe the first time in Shoto recorded history. It was a great problem to have. Um, we're very grateful to Opportunity Bank, uh, for their chili fireworks fundraiser, uh, them in the fire hall, uh, folks that, that did a great job. Thank you for that. Funds are still needed for that. And, and if Mel, you want to chime in, um, feel free, but it went very well. Funds are still needed. You can drop it off at the city, made out to City of Shoto, made out to Chamber of Commerce for the fireworks fundraiser. I got that right, Jody. Um, and then I just want to let everyone know that for Fourth of July, we are, are full bore open on all of our normal events. So we're, we're planning a parade. Uh, we're planning the Brew Fest, Pitchfork Fondue. Uh, we're looking for themes and, uh, grand marshals for the parade. And so if you have ideas or suggestions, and because we didn't have a lot of events last year, we are looking for volunteers this year. We need help with all of those events and I'm sure other organizations need help with, with their events, uh, this year as well. Let's see, Dinosaur Center, we are booking digs right now, tmdinosaurcenter.org. Um, it's gonna be a very, for what it's worth, as a broader disclaimer, it's going to be a busy summer if dinosaur digs being sold is any indication. Um, they're going very well. Uh, Lions Club, um, we are still waiting on our two grants. Uh, we're still waiting to hear back from LWCF regarding the tennis courts and pool boiler, but we're feeling pretty comfortable with how strong our grant application was. So we're hoping to have those going next year. Um, and we're still waiting to hear from the state on the ban shell. And then finally, from the Port Authority's perspective, one of our big things that we're working on right now is we're looking to hire a coordinator, um, to help us. And we're, we're looking to collaborate with a couple of organizations in the region, um, to try and make that more cost effective for Shoto and help us get more grant access. Um, make sure that we're, we're, someone's thinking about shoulder when they wake up in the morning. So, that's all I've got.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Major, with your, with your mascot behind your head.
You better let sleep. Yeah, well, that's a, that's a true saying. Trust me. Uh, you know, I didn't have any, I, I had a couple of things, but I think they've been answered through both Stuart's and Steve's questions. So at this point, I, I'm good.
Back to you, Councilman Merja.
So, uh, my, my wife's sitting here, Steve, and she, you know, you asked for Marshall ideas and I feel hers is a really good one, so I would like to share it here. I think our health department, they have gone above and beyond and taken a lot of flack that didn't belong to them in the last year. And they've done it. They've grinned it. They've bared it. And they've done their best to keep, uh, Shoto and Teton County open and flowing. And I think they could use our gratitude. That's what I gotta say.
I already beat you to it, Stuart. I'm at the last, the last.
Nominated and seconded. Nominated and seconded.
Awesome. Then, then, then it was a good idea then because, because lots of people agree. So awesome. I'm excited to hear that.
Cool. From the mayor's desk. I shot up. That was Zoe. I can't say thank you enough to the crews today who came from literally miles away and counties away to help out our community. And the number of people within our community who have stood up and said, I will donate, I will help, I will do this. From the alley cat, emptying their coolers of water and Gatorade and hauling it up to Salvation One Jesse Oldham and Sally One coming up out of Great Falls, the Red Cross coming up out of Great Falls. Sorry, Tammy's phone is on, um, Augusta, Sun River, Power, Dutton, Fairfield, Pendroy, Shoto. The State Fire Marshal out of Great Falls. And a special thanks to Nate Curtis, who was with me today, who helped those guys with their fire trucks and getting and stuff taken care of. This is, you hate to see an event like this take out a landmark of Shoto. But this is also a reason why we live in a community like this because the people will rally behind it. And they will make sure that any type of issue or anybody that was displaced or lost something will be made whole in a heartbeat. When I left the scene, they were, had an excavator there and I think they were going to try and pull the building over to the south and get it laid down so they could get more water on it, get the heat to dissipate and go from there. There's huge concerns about the chimney. It was still standing when I left off the back end of the building. For that, the house to the north, they kept water on and as far as I know, it had sustained little damage if any. The garage to the south that's on the property there had blistered some paint and things like that, but they were putting water on that as well. It was an amazing first full day back to work. That much I will tell you. So again, I will get kudos out to everybody via social media tomorrow because without them, who knows what would have happened. And thank Mother Nature for the W word not taking showing up today. Or we'd have really had a goat rope. We got a letter from Senator Tester or we, I signed a letter to Senator Tester on behalf of the American Rescue Plan and the funds that were disseminated to our cities. There was forty four communities that were involved in that, that signed the letter and that letter is on, is on file down at the office. Um, in your reports package, it's encouraging for you guys to know that while some people are still behind in their revolving loans, everyone is paying. We've received payments from most everybody within noticeable, I mean, less than thirty days. Some of them have got paid off, but everybody has been paying and it's very, very nice. Because it's nice to have those funds out there as people around want them and good ideas pop up for us to, to go through there. I'm still, my, my doctor yesterday apologized for my voice changing and for me losing my hearing. So know that.
He's covering with you for Tammy, right?
Yeah, exactly. We've been in contact with Fish Wildlife and Parks, not Chad's side of the house, but Fisheries side of the house. And we are at the point where if everything's a go, we will more than likely be begin working on a fishing pond east of the baseball fields on that land that's owned by the city. There were some issues with water and Katie took care of that or as reported that it's been taken care of with the Spring Creek people. That there will be no issues for us and it'd be a pond that is not going to be brushed in. We had this conversation with Chad. But it'd have some trees. It would have grass and stuff. And it'd be an access point for kids to go fishing where they're not on the creek, where they might be run into our bear or another bear. Um, also could be used in the winter time for ice skating. The Legion is aware of it. We're working with them on making sure we can get it fenced off. So that we don't want, you know, Fourth of July rodeo time, we don't need the horses up there, kid, somebody who isn't enjoyed one too many adult beverages walking over there and having an incident. It's been a whirlwind and I had so much more prepared for you guys, but with what happened today, we're not going to get through it all. I want you guys to, to know that. Oh, I know what I was going to ask you about. I've had a number of people call and ask about changing their water rates, the delivery to their buildings from a larger delivery to a smaller delivery. And I got to tell you, I'm very, very leery of doing that. Because once I do that, once we do that, then everybody has a beef and I hate to say it, but when you buy a building, you go into it with your eyes open and you know what these utilities are and you should be prepared for that. And I'm, while I am pro business and I want this place to grow, I also don't want to handcuff the city when it comes to something like this. So if there was a way that you could legally, that we could find a way to, to, to seriously take it from a three inch line to a two inch line and know that's all they were getting. That's one thing, but I don't want to just say, yeah, it's a three inch line, but I'm going to charge you for a two inch line because there's too many Pandora's boxes that that opens for businesses and other places here in, in Shoto.
Chris, on that.
And I will re, go ahead.
On that note, if a, if the building owner themselves wants to go to the expense of taking out their three inch service line and replacing it with a two inch service line, is there anything that would prevent them from bearing that expense themselves?
No, there's not. And as long as they had a correct permit, Mr. Tom, we'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
He's nodding his head.
Right. What you're saying is the city itself can't say, can't either A, pay for the change in a service line or B, say, you have a three inch line, but we're only going to charge you for a two inch line. That's what the city can't do.
Correct. The city could say that, but we're not going to.
Right, right.
Yeah. Um, the memorandum of understanding is done between the library and that and taken care of and they are moving forward that project as well. And kudos to Della. Della was on top of that right away. We've had some conversations and some people call about the community garden. The community garden will not exist unless there is an entity out there, a public entity, a nonprofit entity, a private entity, who's willing to take it on and indemnify the city. Like, we can't have an individual lease it and then indemnify the city if they try to and then have other people go in there and garden because it, you can't spread that risk. It would have to be an entity of some sort to do it and indemnify us and assume handling it and taking care of it. We did tell them, the folks that had stuff in there that they had forty five days to get it out, if I believe correctly, thirty days, forty five days to get their stuff out of there.
End of March.
End of March. Okay.
Yeah.
So, and I know that's going to bone a contention with some folks, but we are at the point in America and our auditor told us the same thing, where our leases are going to create a problem when it comes to bookkeeping. And leasing something to somebody for zero cost is no longer going to be a viable option. Going forward, you're going to have to lease something for somebody at a normal going rate of what that would cost. And so while you hate to see something like that, that was trying to go and get stopped. Yes, it can be done, but it's going to have to be done in different manner with some different steps and, and better protection for us at the city. We've, you know, for some of you have been in City Hall, we're waiting for some flooring to get done and it's not going to get done yet for a while. So it may get pushed off a bit. It's just everybody, like everybody else, everyone's so busy, they can't get caught up. Jody, am I missing anything here? Tom?
Um, just the audit.
Oh, we did have our audit and our audit went very, very well. And that's where we, we had the discussion about the leases. The one in it, was it a finding or was it just more of a note? That our, we know that we're, there's an issue with our, the way our fireman retirement fund is, is financed. We have more than adequate dollars to take care of it. But in order to meet what the state wants it, we're nowhere close. So we know that's there and our auditor is working hard with the state to get that remedy because he's tired of doing that. Not only with us, but with other localities out there.
And it, it's actually Gatsby. We passed a law. We passed a bill that would make it so we, everybody was good with the state. And then two months later, Gatsby came out with a new rule. So we no longer are in compliant, but they're hoping to find a way around that. So we, as long as we are, are good with the state law, MCA code, then they won't have to give us finding anymore. Otherwise we'll take the finding.
And that was the only hiccup on our audit. It was in and out. They were very, very good. Next year's audit provided, depending upon our financing for our, our jobs, which leads me back to something else. We had a meeting today with Collette Anderson from Great West on our wastewater and our water delivery programs and where we're at and if everything plays out the way it looks like it could, we have a choice. We could maybe go to bid in June for those projects. But there's concern if we go to bid in June that everyone's already got work and we won't get any qualified bids. So it's a decision we'll have to look at down the road. Do we go ahead and bid it? And if we get somebody take it or do we go and bid it? And if nobody comes, we go, we wait and we bid it again later. Were they worried about the escalating cost of pipe? And those types of things as well. So if we bid it and accept the bid, we would turn around and hold a special meeting as quickly as possible to accept the bid and get them going so they could get their pipe taken care of and ordered. What else am I missing on that one, Jody?
I think that's good.
Yeah. And there are some additional dollars available through the American Rescue Plan that the state has. And they asked us to submit, uh, I shouldn't say they, Representative Fitzgerald and Senator Gillespie asked us to submit to them projects that we would like to see happen so that FDR dollars are available that we could get that done. So we sent down them, uh, the request for the bridges on uh, Third Street Northeast and Third Street Southeast, the removing those culverts. And we had a letter of support from Fish Wildlife and Parks on those and that was submitted as well.
We did come up with several other things on the wish list for the, the big dollars that also, so different water projects, not much on sewer, but you know, different water, things that actually need to be done that, you know, if we, they're talking seventy five grant, seventy five percent, twenty five percent possibly match. So and we could use our, the money we actually get that just comes to the city as our match. So there, there is opportunity there. Not saying it'll happen, but there is opportunities coming down the pike.
Our TSEP funding made it from the House to the Senate and back to the House. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars made it through. Now they were talking about taking all those TSEP dollars and paying those with American Rescue Plan dollars and keeping the TSEP for another session. So we'll see how that plays out as well. Um, the railroad crossings are sitting down here at Burlington Northern Santa Fe. They're on the south side of the road there. They have been marked once so the engineers could come up and see how much work they had to do. I'd expect June or July before they actually get people up here to do the work. They have asked us at the city to help them with our VAC truck and clean some of that stuff out as they go. But my best recollection is, is that the farthest east crossing will be removed completely and the other two will be rehabilitated. And I think that does it for us. Our next meeting is scheduled for May fourth.
I'll just throw out a quick comment. I have a lot of building permits and zoning permits coming in this month, which you'll um, see in my report next month. But if anyone sees something out there that they're wondering if they got a permit, just shoot me a message and I will follow up on it.
And that's not a bad thing, folks, because we do miss it. Not everybody covers that. We don't get a chance to get out and cover the entire town.
Yep. I've had to contact a few people and let them know. So.
Okay. Be safe out there, you guys. Um, I'm in City Hall in the mornings from eight to nine and try to be back from four to five. But if you need me, track me down. Oh, before we close, I am going to declare Friday Glenn Swanson Day. And I will get a proclamation. We'll find a way to get a proclamation put together. Mel, you'll have to write it in the paper post, but we'll get it out through social media and we will fly the flags at half staff within this, ask for the flags to be flown with the half staff within the city of Shoto for Friday in honorance of our friend Glenn. Okay. We stand adjourned then. See you guys on May fourth. Chad, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.